The regular scheduled meeting of Rock County Council. I just thought I'd like to ask here, please stand and throw a moment silently. And I remind everybody that we are the walls to your member of Rock County community. Regular people say long time in for. We'll see Rock Mountain. It's time I'd like to ask this.
Councilman Blackwell.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
CJ Walker.
Here.
Doctor.
Here.
Harris. Harris. Clark Swaller.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a form today. This time I'd like to request consideration that is the regular scheduled City Council meetings for so far this campaign twenty twenty-three. Please for motion to approve the minutes.
No vote.
Which they have canceled to their second.
Second.
Second, I canceling to Boris Walker. Is there any discussion? If you're done all the better, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like sign. This time I'd like to consider any additions or additions to the table. I do have one addition that I know of that it's a closed session and be related to personnel. Any other additions and or additions up to the agenda tonight? If not, I need a motion to approve. Motion made by Council Blackwell, our second, presented by Council Joyner. Any discussion? If you're done all the better, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like sign. This time I'll turn the meeting over to our city manager, Chief Proctor, for the table.
Thank you, Mayor. So first I would like to say that congratulations to the winners of Saturday's thirty-sixth annual Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King's oratorical competition. In grades six through eight, our first place winner was Joy Branch. And in grades nine through twelve, the first place winter winner was Mr. Austin Burton. So the first place winners will also deliver their speeches on at the Unity Breakfast coming up on the MLK holiday. Which leads us to the Unity Breakfast on the MLK holiday. The breakfast starts at seven AM and the program will begin at eight AM. This year's theme is well done is better than well said. Our guest speaker is Ms. Jane Withers, the Director of the Division of Services for Death and Heart of Hearing of North Carolina's Department of Health and Human Services. And finally, the city of Rocky Mount's first five K run walk to help raise funds for our winter assistance for Rocky Mount program will be held on Saturday, January twentieth. And it will end at Rocky Mount Sports Complex. Registration is forty-five dollars per person. For more information, you can call two five two nine seven two one five three three. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments for City Manager? If you're done, Councilman Blackwell has asked to yield the trust council. I'll give you seven minutes of support. Mr. Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, and to the council, to the citizens of Rocky Mountain. Today, I'm dressed a little bit different today, but I'm dressed in the honor of Arnie Jones, sanitation worker. Who has been vocal about his livable wages. A worker who had put in almost twenty years, but was terminated on December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. It was a big disappointment for this entire city. Arnie Jones was terminated from his job for almost twenty years of loyalty and dedication to the city of Rocky Mountain. In his younger days, he could run two routes. He could fill in when we didn't have the help. He would hustle and bust his tail when the trucks were broken down. We didn't have enough trucks to pick up the trash, but he hung in there. Today's, I and some of my colleagues, we honor you, Mr. Jones, for speaking out. And speaking out for your coworkers and all the city employees of Rocky Mountain that feel just like you. A few months ago, Councilman Blackwell asked our city manager and this council that we will hold true to our own policy of non-retaliation. I believe that Mr. Jones was the target, target subject and very disrespected and retaliated upon. Mr. Jones was encouraged to go to human relation department. And with the advice given to our leadership encouraged not to dismiss Mr. Jones. Our human relation was founded in nineteen sixty-eight during segregation, when the city, most of the cities in the South was tussling with and could not figure out how to get it done. But it was our leaders, both black and white, that came together and created this Human Relations Commission. This Human Relations Commission has the job to investigate complaints from our employees. If our employees can't come to our human relations and human resources, human resource and our city management and can't come to the council, who can they go to other than their Lord and Savior? On our council agenda, we have Dr. King for our annual Unity Breakfast. Thirty-six years, we in Rocky Mountain have had a Martin Luther King Unity Breakfast Day. It's very sad to me that when you look at the history of Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain is known all across this country, all across this state of human rights, civil rights, and workers' rights. Here in Rocky Mountain, where Dr. King did his first I Have a Dream speech at the historical Bogota T. Washington High School, with over eighteen hundred citizens there, to hear the encouragement of Dr. King. It was Dr. King who went to Memphis, Tennessee for the sanitation workers. It was Dr. King who was murdered, who was killed, assassinated for helping the sanitation workers for livable wages, to be respected, to have dignity. Dr. King, who we celebrate. I'm just so dismayed today because we always uplift the dream, I have a dream, but what did Dr. King say at Mason Temple Church of God in Christ when he went there to support the sanitation workers? He talked about the man who fell among thieves on the road from Jerusalem to Jericho. When the Levi and the priests came, they turned, did not administer help or first aid to this man in need. It was the good Samaritan who got off his feet. It was the good Samaritan who gave first aid to this man. It was the Levi and the priest who said, if I would help this man, what would happen to me? Because Jericho Road was a bloody path. It was a place where robbers could kill you and murder you, and they were afraid. But the good Samaritan turned the question around and said, not what would happen to me, but if I don't administer aid, what would happen to him? What would happen to our employees, our sanitation workers? If we, my colleagues, who are elected to serve the people, if we can't help them, who can they go to? The question should be for this city tonight, what can we do to help this man? So as we honor Dr. King here in the city of Rocky Mountain and all across this country, do not let his living be in vain, but let's reach out. And council, I just want to say, I'm done as mayor, that I feel some way responsible, that we are responsible for this happening, Mr. Arnie Jones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. This time, I'd like. Let's wait until more, please. At this time, I'd like to, council, to consider resolution recognizing graduate the Rock Mountain Middle School football team, winning the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Tri-County Football Championship. And so the resolution goes, and whereas the Rock Mountain Middle School football team finished their season with a six-o record in conference play, claiming the title national county middle school champions. And whereas the Ravens finished off their season with a record seven-o, Rock Mountain Middle School Ravens were declared the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Tri-County Champions. Whereas successful seasons such as this brought pride not only to the Rock Mountain Middle School Ravens themselves, but also to their families, their school, and their community. And whereas, while they were outstanding individual players, this championship team, success credited to the total team effort, all of team members. Whereas contributing to the team's success, their head coach, Martellus Park, assistant coaches Julie Kearney, Brian Popkins, Austin Curtis, and their school administration, parents, and families, who provided unflattering support. Now therefore be resolved that I, as mayor and the city of Rocky Mountain Council, congratulate the Rock Mountain Middle School Ravens football team, its coaches for their outstanding regular season at the Tri-County Championship. And be further resolved, this resolution shall spread upon the pages and the minutes of this proceeding, and a copy shall be presented to each team member, the coaches, and staff, and others who are instrumental in the success of their season. I need a motion for a justice resolution to vote. Motion made by everybody, second by everybody. All the favorites say aye. Congratulations, guys. Now I present council consideration of the resolution honoring the Rock Mountain Academy Football Team. Whereas on Friday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the Rock Mountain Academy Eagles completed an eleven-two season with its eleventh straight victory. A thirty-eight, thirty-two man at Wayne Christian becomes the twenty twenty-three NCIS AA and eight-man state football champions. Whereas this win gave Rock Mountain Academy its fourth state championship since twenty thirteen. And whereas the state championship was won by players who were very aware that championships are not made by individual players, but by teams. And whereas in winning the twenty twenty-three NCIS AA eight-man state football championship, the Rock Mountain Academy Eagles distinguished themselves individually and collectively as a team, and brought credit not only to themselves, but to their families, their school, and their community. And whereas while the outstanding individual players in the tournament winning the championship, the total team effort from all the team members, whereas the trudies of the team's success, key individuals including head coach Nick Ahula, assistant coach Cody Terry, Greg Brown, Manuel Davis, Terrell Pitchens, Mo Jones, Tim Murphy, and Senator Newton, Beth Murphy, head of school, and Catherine Ryan, athletic director, and their parents and families who provided unflattering support. Now therefore be resolved that I, as the mayor and the Rock Mountain City Council, hereby congratulate Rock Mountain Academy's football team and its coaches and staff for the great accomplishments and honor of winning the twenty twenty-three NCIS AA eight-man foot state football championship. Be further resolved, this resolution shall spread upon the pages of this proceeding and the minutes of this meeting, and shall be presented to each team member, the coaches, the staff, and others, and Mr. Mill and the successive team. I need a motion, please.
Send the motion to move.
Motion made by everybody, it's our second by everybody. All the favorites say aye. All right, congratulations, guys.
Hey, how you doing?
This time I'd like to make a presentation of the Medal of Valor to Sergeant Cameron Joyner and Corporal Hussy. I'll let the chief.
As the mayor has already said to everyone that we are here to recognize Sergeant Joyner and Corporal Hussy as recipients for the Medal of Valor. The Medal of Valor stands as the department's highest award to be presented for an officer. It's reserved for instances where an employee has clearly surpassed his call of duty, exhibited exceptional courage regardless of personal safety, and attempted to save and protect lots of others. On February the ninth, Sergeant Joyner and Corporal Hussy were doing their duties. As an officer without warning and without provocation found themselves in a life or death situation. And was fired at the time, at least one round hitting Sergeant Joyner causing injury, that he was, thank God, was able to walk away from it. Under tremendous stress, pressure, and having to make split-second decisions, they were both able to stop the threat to their lives. The public, and to render aid to the person until medical and other officers were able to arrive to save. Now law enforcement is a noble profession, but this incident serves as a reminder of the dangers that come to each and every officer without warning. And at any time, they have to, may have to put their lives in the line of where less the true situation may be for the protection of themselves or other people. These two officers exhibit steadfast courage while faithfully executing their duty to protect and serve our community, earning them this well-deserved recognition of the Medal of Valor. Give them a round of applause.
Mayor, by my way, on behalf of the City Council and City Rock Mountain, thank you both, too. This is a constant reminder of dangerous committing law enforcement and all that you do to protect us and residents of City Rock Mountain. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Both of these officers, I'd like to also present them, I'm going to manage the presentation, but present them this Medal of Valor with their plate in the bottom engraved, presented to Corporal Wiki, Vicky Hussy, and of course Sergeant Cameron Joyner. I won't put it around you, but I'm just going to present you both these values. And on behalf of the City of Rocky Mountain, Mayor of the City Council, Steve Osterreward, will be presented to you this evening. Thank you so much.
Councilmember, just slide over some.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on in. Yes, sir, Councilman Joyner, you can come right in there beside Councilmember Knight, please. That wonderful. Thank you. Will you have everybody on the main plane? In three, two, one. One more. One, one more, and three, two, one. And I can get tell them to hold where you are, because there's a couple more flights. Uh, that we're going to take theirs, and I believe someone can keep you like that, too. Well, thank you, what I'd like to...
I have to say, one more thing, I know some of the family members are here. Can the family members please stand up? These two officers, Sergeant Joyner and Corporal Hussey, they experienced a very, very stressful situation. And even through that hellish experience, they have prevailed showing the resilience that they've both have shown over ten years. Each have given to this department, but I recognize that it's because of the family's support that has gotten them through this situation. And it allows them to continue to serve our city and the citizens that we proudly serve. So I know that we recognize them, it's also a reminder of that day. And all the what ifs that have been going through your mind even now, it goes through my mind. But I'm thankful that they're both here to be recognized, and I'm thankful that you are showing your support as you have done up to now, and your continued support for them as you go forward to reach the family.
Thank you.
I have to bring this item number eight on our agenda, petitions to be received from the public. Public's petition portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comments. The city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. City council values all citizen input. This is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to council, however, most cases council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored and we'll give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that assigned issues must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. If an audience group is pressed to speak on a comment issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments are in regard to an item that is subject to a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary head hearing, additional time may be granted. City council appreciate it. Plus, as you please secure to the following guidelines, complete assigned issue, address the council as a whole and not the individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, not argumentative, respectful manner. Personal attacks which have potential disruption to equal will not be tolerated, and you'll be asked to sit down or move from the meeting in three minutes to three minutes. This time I'd like to invite Mr. Bushdancy to the podium.
I think everybody can move to Bushdancy in a second. Really didn't want to come up and say anything, but after, um, Congressman Andre Knight, uh, said what he said, I just wanted to come up and support that. But I do want to add that, uh, what people need to understand, I started on the Rocky Mountain Human Relations Commission, and everybody knows, we come to this meeting, all of you, everybody on this council. And, um, I know the deal is in Rocky Mountain. But I want to say that people need to understand that the Rocky Mountain Human Relations Commission is not just for the employees of the city. I have been the, um, I'm actually a member of the NWSCP since nineteen ninety-two, so we're in Rocky Mountain, um, part of other organizations. And I was the legal redress chair, and I sent folk to the Rocky Mountain Human Relations Commission. So what I want people to understand is the Rocky Mountain Human Relations Commission is for anybody that work in Rocky Mountain. Use them, make them do their job. And I just want to say I support, uh, Arnold Jones, I can relate to, um, speaking up and speaking out and being talking it. And I could imagine what the brother has been going through, trying to go to work every day and not make a mistake. And that's hard to do when people are working, uh, are working against you, uh, dealing with your livelihood. I'm just glad the brother hasn't cracked. But people need to understand, you need to support folk, give them some moral support. You don't have to know the whole story, but it's time that we as black folk support each other. There's so much going on today, and it just pisses me off, because I've been out here, I just heard Six to One Christmas Day, and I stopped and come to this meeting since the eighties, longer than anybody on this council other than their, um, their chairman. And I see some things, but not only here, but and not only in Rocky Mountain, because I travel all over. But it's time for us to come together and stick together. You don't have to have to know the whole story, and you just need to stand with folk and, and, and let them go through the process. And if the process come out not in their favor, okay, but stand with folk. We got to start standing with each other, hold folk accountable. People said we want to be held accountable, but hold them accountable and see what happens. Especially folk maybe need big dollars. Y'all have real ass.
Um, this, have some of the parents there who signed in.
Good evening to our mayor, city council members, city managers, and staff. Happy New Year. Thank God we come into a new year, and I have some new expectations. As a citizen of Rocky Mountain, I'm excited about the unlimited potential for growth and development of our city and communities. I hope that we will embrace and practice the core values of our city, including respect from the least to the greatest. I am also concerned because the dumpster with the name Top Dog is still sitting outside of our city council building. And represents a conflict of interest with the city of Rocky Mountain who has their own employees to collect our garbage. How can we get rid of a person before we get rid of a dumpster? I don't understand that. I want that dumpster removed so that we can move forward. I'm also concerned about the firing of the long-term sanitation worker who has been coming to the council just asking for a fair wage increase. I mean, what's so threatening about asking for more money? It is not just for everybody. Well, this is a new year, and I don't have to be happy, you know, because everybody leave me happy. I'm happy because God is in my heart, and God keeps me happy. And I can look at each one of you and tell you that I love you. And I can look at some of you and tell you I don't like what you have done. So I am embracing this new year with new expectations for you embracing the core values of our city, including respect, mutual respect. You might not like somebody, but respect them, because in the end, we've got to live together. And if you don't believe in, um, regret, just live long enough. You have an opportunity to be a hero or a zero. You're writing history right now. Make these moments count for the good.
But I come with two bold messages. One that gets, uh, it's, and this pleases my heart because I see what's going on in the city. And not only I see it, but the citizens see it. We have people who say they are city managers. Supervisors are sitting here trying to get rid of employees all because they speak out. But Second Amendment says that first you can't speak out without getting retaliated against. But yet, we have a man who didn't retaliate again, been bothered around the city, been, uh, putting cameras on. Been doing all these different things to him just to get him out, just to indemnize the city workers. They got the city workers so afraid to even speak out that they won't even come to the city council. They won't even speak out to the superintendent. Why? Because they're afraid to get fired. And if you're afraid to get fired, what are you doing on your job? Now, I want to give Andre Knight his due, just his due, because I think he was right. We have a prayer practice for Martin Luther King every year. But that prayer practice seemed to me as going up and down. When you get a city manager who can get seventy-five thou- ask for a seventy-five thousand dollar raise and get it, the city workers can't even ask for twenty-five cents and get a raise. It's such a role in this picture. And one day, you're going to be on that road. And who are you going to call on? The Lord is looking down at you, and he knows you, he writing you, and you're going to be accounted for one day. But I want to let you know now that Arnold Jones deserved to be back into the city without any retaliation. We don't only have city managers on the, on the, on the city council. We understand that he's not a part of the city council, but he's city manager. We have preachers, and we have those who apply preachers on it, and they want him to stand up. We come here night after night and ask to put this house, city rain back on the dock, and what we do? Return a debt here to it. City manager, man, it is up to you to put it back on the thing. No, it ain't up to you, it's up to the city, to the man that you put it back on, because you're not working for yourself, you're working for the citizens of Rocky Mountain. And you working for the citizens of Rocky Mountain, you just got reelected, and you won't even sit up here and put this back on the dock so it can be talked about.
Thank you. By the way, I'd like to remind everyone that, um, the task and the requirement is to come forward is not to speak to individual council members, but to the councils as a whole.
Yeah, boy, the whole. You are.
Um, Mr. King, you signed up next, but I believe that this is actually related to a public hearing that we have later scheduled, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. This time I'd like to invite Cooper Blackwell to the podium.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Um, as we approach Martin Luther King Junior Day, we're reminded of Dr. King's legacy. Um, we look around our city and we see different forms of injustice. Um, and Dr. King, it was Dr. King who said injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Um, so today, these words resonate with profound significance for us, uh, as we consider the plight of Arnold Jones. Um, Arnold Jones is a dedicated sanitation worker who's been advocating for fair pay and equitable treatment under penalty at this point. Dr. King believed deeply in the dignity of labor, and he believed and stood firmly with sanitation workers, asserting that all labor has dignity. Yet, as we prepare to honor his memory on Monday, we find ourselves in the midst of a struggle that reflects the very issues that Dr. King talked about and died for, gave his life for. As we draw closer to Monday, we're reminded that any law that uplifts human personality is just. And any law that's degrading hu- human personality is unjust. These words speak to the heart of the matter concerning Mr. Jones. A man whose only desire was to uplift his fellow workers through fair treatment and fair pay. The fact that Mr. Jones not only undermines his dignity, but it's also a collective, it also undermines the collective morale of those in the city who work daily to keep our city going. It's an action that by Dr. King's definition degrades human personality and thus is unjust. As we honor Dr. King on Monday, let's move forward towards Monday, understanding that a just law in harmony with the moral law. Understanding that we must reflect on our actions and decisions today. Let's not commemorate Dr. King by merely reflecting on the past, but making a movement for justice today. Let's reinstate Mr. Jones and affirm that our city is committed to justice and equity. Let's not forget that our actions today will be the legacy that we leave tomorrow, and as we celebrate MLK Day. Let's embody the principles that Dr. King stood for by reinstating Mr. Jones and reaffirming the commitment to all workers in Rocky Mountain. It's time for us to honor Dr. King's legacy by ensuring that injustice to one is injust- is injustice to all. On this day and every day, let us strive to be a city that embodies equity, dignity, and fair payment for all.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. This time I would like to invite Monmastray Shahid to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. A call for unity by a petitioner last year and by many others last year in the midst of a contentious past conflict ran hollow and meaningless. A call for unity should ask the question, with whom do you unite? Do you tell the slave to unite with the slave master? Or was this call for unity an easy way out to bury this contentious acrimonious wage issue slash class struggle and move on into oblivion? In the context of capitalism, with its extreme inequality in wealth and power, unity is hard to come by because you cannot serve two masters. The interests of the working class are dramatically opposed to the interests and greed of the super rich. If you desire to be loyal to big money, big business, big corporation, you will inevitably have to sell out the workers. And for many, selling, selling out is an easy pipeline to instant prosperity, we know that. We heard the booming voice last, last year calling on the council to find money for the city workers' wage increase. And the next time, the same booming voice was on the other side, painting the words injustice and fair in various colors to hoodwink his listeners into complacency and stupor. To accept their status quo, forgetting that injustice and fair have past phases too. On whose side are you when you're calling for unity? You cannot talk for both sides of your mouth. Unity is hard, is achieved through hard work, organizing and mobilizing citizens in peril usually. You have to be ready to break rules and confront power in order to achieve mass solidarity and its, and its demands. Martin Luther King understood this and won the trust of the people he stood for and with, famously the sanitation workers. His message of unity was succinct and unwavering. You stand with one group, with one set of people, with a set of demands, the right to vote, desegregation, economic independence, labor rights, to name a few. Until his life was snapped out by power, just as Arnold Jones' economic independence was snapped out by power slash city for standing tall with his coworkers. Next time you come to the council and call for unity, please come with a blueprint for unity. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Chris Austin to the podium.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Uh, lots of talk about housing, and it's great to see the enthusiasm about housing. But I want to draw attention to Five Points Crossing, we're so glad that I sent Mr. Blackwell some more, more, we're excited about Five Points Crossing. But reading the paper, um, recently and hearing the excitement of those who were against it is, you know, it's something to think... But reading the paper recently and hearing the excitement of those who were against it is, you know, it's something to think about. But let me stay focused on what people need to know about Five Points Crossing. Uh, Five Points, it was an affordable housing project that began in twenty nineteen, and it was under the administration of our former city manager, Rochelle Smallton. Now, when the city uh was one of two, we were one of two cities in the state uh that was awarded the funds for the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency to utilize the state and federal funding and developer tax credits to provide affordable housing in areas significantly impacted by Hurricane Matthew. For those who recall, um, it was a big impact in our state in twenty sixteen. The city's participation in the project was its contribution of city-owned land at the Five Points area and authorized by the city council shortly thereafter around twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Fortunately for the city, monetary funding for the project came from state and federal grants and tax credits. However, the city's contribution of land is the most important to the Five Points project because without the land, the affordable housing development would not have been financially possible and therefore would not have been selected by the state. And as you recall, I did say that we were one of two cities that were awarded the funding. The ra- uh, the city council, upon the recommendation of then the city council, um, the city manager Rochelle Smallton selected Five Points over two other sites because of the council's urges to revitalize downtown and increase the availability of affordable housing throughout the city. The Five Points Crossing, and for those of you who have not taken time to see the development, it is a beautiful site to see development downtown and to see that uh we need more of those projects in our downtown area. Uh, the Five Points Crossing project ensures that affordable housing will be available in our downtown. Um, if you would go to other uh cities, um, in other downtown areas, market rate housing, it drives the poorer citizens away from even having the opportunity to have housing in the downtown area. However, I'm just uh great to have the project, and we're looking forward to having it to open. Uh, but also want to remember, as you do remember Five Points, uh, remember Rochelle Smallton and Mr. Jones, we stand with you. Thank you for speaking out. And for those of you who had anything uh for his firing, I don't know how you sleep at night. Uh, those of you sitting on the council, it's a concept of sanitation workers, if we have awards system, you're welcome.
I'd like to invite more individuals to the podium.
Sorry, I'm getting slower and slower with the older of yet. Um, first, I'd just like to say, happy new year. Hope it's a better one than twenty-three. And just for the heck of it, you know that old Ebony and Ivory place I've been bitching at, I mean, I've been close and about for five years. Um, nothing's happening to that, you know, so uh, we're just gonna go on. Do you know that time back in November when um we had a no council meeting meeting because there wasn't a quorum? And I was told then not to worry, well, I didn't really say don't worry, but um, I seem to get, some people riled up because I was so worried about this Ebony and Ivory dump. And then they told me that there were a couple of places in Rocky Mountain, one down three oh one, I think it used to be Sledge Lock or somebody, and they messed up the earth. And then there's a place on another part of town that I think might be near Planners Place, um, I think maybe where the old Wooton Ring was, somewhere in that area. And that land has gotten just pooped on. Well, if those people in that ward know that they were so bad, they better go find out some way to fix that up, I believe. Um, let's see. Oh, and do people on the street that beg, do they have to have a permit? Can just anybody make the poor little old crappy sign that says, I'm homeless, get me money? Do, do they have to ask for permission to do that? And if so, whoever gives them that permission, I would like y'all to tell them to stop. I think we got plenty of those beggars. And the guy at Tractor Supply said, one old beggar came in and bought a hundred dollar pair of shoes. I won't even buy a hundred pairs, dog, anyhow. They must be doing really good, is all I gotta say. And who do you talk to if you want to put a trailer or a, a smaller house on your lot if you have like more than twenty acres? And nobody tell me. Okay, I'll, I'll call somebody if I tell you. Thanks, good luck.
I'd like to invite uh Dr. K to the podium this time.
I took that plan that no one referred citizens to people who follow up on issues when they're real issues.
I'd like to invite Mr. Andrew to the podium.
Good evening. Next Monday on January fifteenth, many people will be celebrating Martin Luther King's death. Although Dr. King was most famous for fighting for civil rights, he was tolerated by the system until he took up three important issues at this time. Number one, like the global south, he realized that political independence is not enough. It was if it is not supported and sustained by economic independence. Thus, he started the Poor People's Campaign. Number two, he realized that our country maintained its wealth by exploiting other countries and sending our citizens to fight wars far away from us. So in nineteen sixty-seven, he spoke against the American War on Vietnam, stating that the United States is the greatest purveyor of violence in our world today. Number three, he took up the struggle of the workers for dignity, fair pay, and the right to organize. He especially supported the sanitation workers in Memphis at a time of his assassination. Let us be clear, Dr. King was not a threat to the U.S. empire until he took up these three issues. The three issues challenged the very foundation of the oligarchic rule of this country. For that, he was murdered. Decades after his death, black and brown people are worse off. Wages remain stagnant, people are drowning in debt, infrastructure is breaking down, and for the first time in our history, the life expectancy of our people has gone down. Life expectancy is a best gauge for how well the country is doing regardless of the fake statistics and the lies about the economy. The wealth divide is astronomical, with a one percent wallowing in billions, while ninety-nine percent can hardly make ends meet. What is the use of the vote if you cannot pay your bills? The local newspaper refuses to print anything on the continuing genocide in Gaza or the lost war in Ukraine. Meanwhile, the United States is getting more and more isolated in the global arena for continuing to veto the United Nations Security Council's vote for an immediate humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza. It is related to us because our tax money is being shunted to the forever wars this country is fighting, miles and miles away from us. Bring home our tax dollars to better the lives of the citizens here. The city is making a mockery of Dr. King on his birthday, by the inane theme of the day, well done is better than well said. What nonsense is that? You are insulting Dr. King by firing the most outspoken sanitation worker, Arnie Jones, when he stood up for the rest of the city workers for fairer pay and the dignity on his job. Dr. King will not appreciate his hypocrisy and the irony of trembling on his ideals while, while celebrating him. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number one, which is intended as a look for a motion that will uh be inclusive of approved tax releases and more refunds, approval of voting of duty badges and sidearms, adopt resolutions, authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute all of our documents on behalf of the city, award a rebate as recommended, and authorize purchasing authority to issue a purchase order in account quarters from the council's award. Is there a question? Question, Governor, Councilor, or is there a second? Say goodbye to Councilor Blackwell.
Thank you, Councilor. Yes, do you have a question about the acceptance of the grant funding?
I guess about the whole, how you have to, because it's a, it's a specific issue. Have a question about that. What is customary is that we have questions about actions that are taken, and they're being, we're here to speak about those actions. This is a pretty big deal for the entire city, um, Rocky Mountain as far as all the communities are concerned. And we've had ongoing drainage issues in uh many communities in Rocky Mountain. We already put the whole number, but up to us to live through. I fully understand the need to have appropriate training. And um, that community uh continues to be like, as well, hundred-year-old plus infrastructure. And I believe, if I'm correct, and I just want, I don't want to speak out of turn, um, the professionals are here to do that. That um, this grant calls for um escalating the study and prioritizing the placement, I believe, drainage, uh, supplies, material, heights, whatever. Is that right?
Again, Councilor, I'm happy to have a report presented or sent, but uh, what's before us is accepted.
I understand that, but part of city council meeting is to inform the public about what we're doing. Now, that's the custom. I've been here twenty-three years, and if we have a question about actions that we're taking, because the public is here, I know what it says. I can read, and I've been here. This is for the benefit of our constituents. Is anybody here that can talk about this issue?
Mayor, if I ever may, Councilor, I'm happy to give you a full report at a later date, but tonight, we are here to accept it.
I don't need a four-minute, I need a two-minute overview. That's all I was asking for. I've asked for from every other city manager, and I've never had a problem.
So, yes, this is, this is what we're about, um, Councilman Knight, yeah, this one is going to end.
I was gonna uh say that Mr. Brad Carr is sitting in the gallery, and he's familiar and aware of the drainage issues and the cover issues uh that the Edgemont neighborhood has been experiencing. Uh, what Councilman Blackwell asked for a two-minute or a brief synopsis of what the money is gonna be used for, the house will impact the homes in the Edgemont neighborhood. And if we have department heads uh that are in our meetings, uh, I would like for you, as the mayor, to defer uh to Mr. Carr, because he's very familiar with it. Is that correct, Mr. Carr? Don't be afraid to speak. I know that we have issues with retaliation, but we are live. And I'm asking you not to be afraid because we ask for information that impacts our community. And Mr. Doctor has also been talking about infrastructure. And uh, since he's been on the council. And I know he asked a question that all of us would want to know about the infrastructure in our community. I don't think that's a setup question. I think it's a question that's worth um asking Mr. Brad Carr to address at this time.
Mayor, Mayor, Mr. Carr, would you please just give us a brief update? And as I stated, we will make sure that we give a full uh report to the council at a later date, but if you could just explain what the actual study is for a moment.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, the funding of Harper Grant, uh, is the planning director. Uh, this government worked through the city of Rocky Mountain to study the Edgemont uh drainage basin. Project will inventory and entire uh drainage infrastructure within that basin, uh, determine its condition. Uh, then we'll do a hydraulic study to identify areas where we have issues. Uh, they will then do preliminary designs for the various uh remedies for those, cost estimate, and then give us a prioritization for us to then later come back and program.
That's efficient, and if, if it helps, then sometimes maybe we move these things off of the incentive that goes with regular items.
Would you, I think that's certain.
Thank you.
But yes, Councilman, I talked to you, and I recognize you, Councilman Knight.
And I agree with your last statement, Council Blackwell. I think, I was, I'm a little bit assumption here. I, I, I think probably what we should have done is moved this off so we could have full discussion with it. You know, instead of being part of the incentive agenda, because normally we have a incentive agenda. Um, we should have a discussion whether to consider up or down, if I understand that, so. I, I, that might be where the hesitation came in about the discussion, so um, I think I'll get a bit of that out there. So um, but no, I agree, we should be dealing with it more well, um, infrastructure because of value reports is our city all horses.
Can y'all speak up?
Don't want to uh belabor the point, but um, I think as a council, we have something on the regular agenda or the consent agenda. And if a question arrives that we have or should have competent staff to address these issues. That's why we have all the department heads. And if our manager can't do it, then this council should expect our staff to do it. And our citizens should expect the city manager, department heads, and this council to understand what we're voting for and what's on this agenda. Are we paying very, very good salaries?
That's right. That's right.
I'm gonna sleep it there.
We have a motion, and I have a second. Is there a need for further discussion, or can we both, uh, favorably say aye?
Aye.
All those like aye. This time I'd like to recall.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, if you hold on, Councilman, this time I'd like to uh call the board again, recognize that Councilman Harris is uh part of the need.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Troy?
Here.
T.J. Walker?
Here.
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Troy Swobod?
Here.
Councilman Harris, I'll recognize you.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Mayor, that uh I was on, and hopefully I will be available for future discussion and votes. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings aside item number ten on the agenda, which is a public hearing relative to the following recently proposed municipal approval and family compliance with comprehensive plan by the Plan Board. Requested by Race Track Incorporated, reasonable plus or minus seven point oh one acre site having identification number three eight six two one four three four three eight one nine, located in the west east of the South East of the junction of Thomas, that's Parkway from I two, heavy industrial district two B five, which is commercial services district. Decided west west home from November thirteen, twenty twenty-three, and December eleven, uh, city council meeting, district, and request the action be placed on until January eight. Decided westward from November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and December eleventh, uh, City Council meeting, District who requests the action request item until January eighth, twenty twenty-four. At this time, we're gonna receive public comment, and in that case, we will vote on it. This time I will open the meeting, public hearing, not for public comment. So everybody here, the public, who wishes to speak, I'll listen to you for that. Mr. King.
Thank you for allowing us, uh, extended opportunity to speak, uh, again, as a matter of Race Track is on the request. Uh, I just wanted to share a few points, uh, related to the opposition from my client, Mary Barnes, and this company Frontier Traffic Association. As I mentioned to you the last time that I was here, uh, I surmise that the Department of Transportation might have something to say about this. And as a matter of fact, they have had something to say about what's going to be presented, uh, in this, uh, request. Uh, what happened, uh, was Department of Transportation, a site plan was presented to them. And if I can indulge you, I'm gonna read the first paragraph that I do have copies of this, if you would like to have it for the record. Uh, but this was a, uh, email, uh, that was sent to the T piece of Race Track by time from Kimberly Molt, who is the district engineer, uh, Division Four of District Two of National Wilson County. And it says, "Father, thank you for reaching out to our office and submitting an initial site plan." Comment. "We reviewed the plan and have concerns about the current design. Uh, we have had numerous accidents at the intersection of U S three oh one and Thomas St. Fitz Parkway, and have taken great steps to mitigate them in the recent past. There is an history of vehicles blowing through the traffic circle and crashing. Uh, and we've made, uh, modifications on site to help. We've added and altered signage such as three-four signal head signs with reflective sheeting on the coast. We've added a Parkway Inn sign. We've repositioned the speed limit sign further back, and we've added, uh, black on yellow double arrow signs indicating drivers at the end of the Thomas Fitz Parkway that enters three oh one must either turn right or they must turn left soon. We also have a, uh, an upcoming safety project to add flashers on Thomas St. Fitz if you approach U S three oh one. This just names a few of the modifications we tried to location, and all we've done is draw further attention to the intersection and signal." Then it says this, "Due to the known safety issues, our office would prefer to eliminate the driveway entrance at the red light completely." And of course, that the red light we're talking about is the light that leaves Thomas Fitz Parkway and enters into the area that's going to utilize a by Race Track and of course, utilize a Frontier Traffic Association. I've, uh, I've worked about forty-four years, uh, now with tax office here in Rockin' Mountain. It's been a real pleasure because, uh, with this council and also with the tax office, they've been great to work with. And, and this council has done a very, very good job of maintaining a stable tax group, which I tell you, I certainly appreciate as a business owner, and I know the other citizens appreciate it as well. But the bottom line of this project is quite frankly, it was just the tax dollars for the city of Rockin' Mountain. This project is just not safe. Uh, we, I, I, I won't go off through all the things I said the last time I was here, most of the people here, uh, when I said that. You know, the big issue that I see in this whole matter for you, as you made this vote tonight, is should we trade tax dollars for people's lives? That is the real issue that you've got to set up here tonight, if you go on this rezoning.
And I, I think even.
Not to get too dramatic, but U S three oh one is used by a lot of people. What if that person that died in an accident in a particular thing, your mother? What if it's your father? What if it's your wife? What if it's your brother? Or your son, or your daughter? You know, it's gonna be no help at all to these people who are killed at the intersection. When you say to them, uh, and send them a letter after the fact and say, "I'm really sorry that this happened." This can stop here, right here tonight, with a vote to not rezonate this property. And so I am requesting that you strenuously vote no on the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a member of the public here, please come forward.
There's a council, good evening, my name's William Kenny, Attorney General for St. Lloyd, I'm here. I'm here along with Tommy Dees for Race Track, uh, to speak in favor of the motion. We do have some, uh, demonstrables which may help, uh, highlight whether we believe this is consistent with the recommendation for approval from, uh, city staff and, uh, Tommy, if you could help me. Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, hold.
Okay, if you wanna hold, then that's fine, uh. Briefly, this is the site so that you can see, uh, the space we're talking about, uh, you know, and as you have on, uh, the screen as well, and as you noted at the outset. So I appreciate very much the professionalism of the planning staff and working with us through this process, uh, and we have endeavor to engage in good faith with the neighbors, Barnes and Attorney King, to find resolutions that might, uh, might work. Nonetheless, they are opposing the, uh, project, and we believe there are good reasons why. Recommendation from city planning staff and planning commissioners, sound, given your, uh, appreciation of your consideration supporting the motion to pass. Primarily, as you'll note, the land is currently not utilized. In fact, much of the land on U S three oh one is not currently utilized. However, the city's, uh, Conference of Land Use Plan anticipates utilization, and we think this is a good opportunity for this parcel, uh, to be developed, uh, to allow for community investment, to allow for jobs in the area, to allow for the provision of gasoline, convenience store items, food, healthcare, uh, medical, uh, things you could purchase in a convenience store, now, which is a space that you can see. Uh, as I noted, we've worked since, uh, about the middle of last year, uh, with Mr. Barnes and the neighbor to find different opportunities. There is a site plan, and some references which is available. Yeah, I'm gonna show that. And I'll also just note, as you are aware, the site plan at present, uh, would be subject for later approval from planning officials. Uh, but I think it's good to see the space that we're talking about. Uh, as Mr. Barnes notes, we remain working, uh, with N C D O T, uh, on their concerns, it's consistent with what Race Track does across the region, uh, and anticipate additional traffic studies, research, uh, engagement about the proper point of entry, uh, to the site. Notably, uh, Mr. Barnes did acquire his site from this larger parcel of land about thirty years ago, in that he, uh, authorized this parcel to go through and use his property and to be able to access the intersection. Uh, his opposition now indicates that, uh, offer, it would be stymied by objection, but the right is there, the approval is there. Uh, we certainly welcome, uh, continued dialogue with N C D O T, uh, Federal Highway Administration, and city, most importantly, uh, about the, the site and its uses. Tommy, I'm gonna give you one more, uh, site so you can see how potential entry and egress would go. Yeah, there's six oh one, three oh one, excuse me. Where potential curb cuts could be here, uh, and you also have Mr. Barnes's, which he currently utilizes of the same traffic pattern coming out, uh, coming out here. As Mr. King notes, this issue primarily boils down to safety and the well-being of, uh, passengers and customers. Clearly, Race Track is, uh, considerate of, uh, motor vehicle safety, people coming through the access. This is consistent with what any company would do, and certainly consistent with any decisions that the city makes, city planning staff makes. I think what we simply have is a difference of opinion about whether the road, uh, is safe as is where these accidents are happening, or would be safer with improved, uh, commercial traffic. Cars would be slowing down, turning in, turning out, essentially less like a highway and more like a road. Uh, we, uh, certainly welcome your consideration of the rezoning in front of you. We look forward to continuing to work with the city through this process. Uh, it's about, uh, Tommy, thirteen, eleven to thirteen million dollars cap bet or investment, eight to eleven?
Yes.
Right, about eight to eleven million dollars project, uh, with an opportunity to create, uh, jobs in, in the, uh, in the area, and I think those benefits are self, self-explanatory. And I thank the council very much for this time.
Thank you. Any other member of the public here wishing to speak in this particular matter? Please come forward.
Well, the reason or not, it's kind of near the house, not too far. And Race, Race Track, it's not like a convenience store or something like that. Well, I don't mean anything rude, but we got plenty of those. We got, um, sheep, no, she, she, sheep's down a little bit. We got the dollar store, we got, um, I mean, do we really need another gas station, convenient mall? Especially that might cause trouble with, um, traffic? I just, I was thinking. Anyway. Need more.
Thank you. Any other, uh, public here wishing to speak in this particular matter? Sitting on here, not all of us, but there are certain questions, Council, Council.
Yes, I have a question, uh, um, attorneys, the attorney and the doctor. Uh, Mr. King, um, at N C D O T, uh, if you do that, has that been before the planning board, um, in their consideration? And I understand, I think the philosophy that I'm, I'm understanding, and I think I would agree with, is that, um, more development slows down traffic because people have to slow down to turn into a particular location. Question might be, how is it configured? Is that something, is that in the process of development? Is that where now you work out those details with, um, the planning staff and the D O T and other property, um, owners who are around there to mitigate their concerns? Or is that, are you saying, or, or, uh, Mr. King, that, uh, who's devised that's a deal come? Uh, but if, if, uh, we choose to go forward, um, what are your considerations concerning traffic harmony? And, um, and, um, improving the.
Yes, yeah, I appreciate the question.
Sure.
We are very early on, uh, in the design and development process. Uh, we currently have a traffic study underway. That's typically the first item that needs to take place before D O T will, um, accept any official applications or thoroughly, um, look into, uh, the development. We have had a few preliminary discussions with them. Uh, we're committed to working with both, uh, D O T and the city, um, as we move forward. As we stand today, the, the site plan that we showed, um, is part of our application. There'll still be many hands, um, you know, opinions, uh, you know, that take place on that site plan, and you'll have to go through the city's, um, the planning and engineering department, as well as a thorough, uh, D O T review. I will say ultimately, what will likely happen, uh, if the project does go through, is that improvements will be made to that signal at Race Track's expense. Uh, and D O T as well as Race Track will ensure that as a result of this development, the intersection is safer overall.
Thank you. You have a question, Council?
Council, vote.
I don't know if my question's to the city attorney, to, um, Ms. Benson, or I'm not sure if I can correct this question to really, but regarding the rezoning, the rezoning that's before us today. How, how much of the concern is applicable to, to the rezoning basis? If rezoning, one issue, but the city can start another issue, I need some clarity on that. Because I think it's, my understanding, we kind of have a narrow scope that we can put through, or am I incorrect in my understanding?
The D O T will have to approve any, any entrance and exit, uh, off of three oh one and Thomas, that's partly related to this. Now, you are supposed to sort of consider every use that could be made of this parcel, not specifically this one. So, I mean, if the, you know, if it's resumed, they could use it for something else, but, you know, doesn't indicate any problem. But, uh, they're not going, I don't think they're gonna get approved until D O T is satisfied that it's safe.
Let me clarify my question. Well, can we, can we consider the concern of safety in the rezoning request, is my question?
You can, you can consider anything in it, it's a legislative hearing, uh.
You have a question?
Yes.
I think, um, I suppose you answer the question, maybe improvements or any, um, design to the site, or as, um, um, traffic concern, it has to be approved by, no problem, D O T.
Yes, that's right.
Councilor. Councilor. Okay, yeah. Yes, Councilor.
This way.
All right, Councilman Harris, I'll recognize you next, Councilor.
So, yes, with that safety issue, we're considering D O T.
Councilman Harris, did you, um, have something you want to add?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions I would like to ask the attorney representing Race Track. Unfortunately, I was not able to really see a good, uh, a, a picture of, of some of his, um, headouts that he showed the council. But I would like to know how many proposed huge tractor trailer trucks will be coming into his, his new facility on a daily basis?
Uh, I think, yes, I can answer that question. So as I previously mentioned, we still are doing our traffic studies. Uh, so that number will be based off of the number of tractor trailers, uh, that are currently, uh, occupy three oh one. Uh, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but what I will say is that we are a convenience-based brand, not a destination. Uh, so by that, I mean that, uh, as a result of our development, it's not likely, uh, that that number is gonna be, the number of tractor trailers on three oh one is gonna be increased. Uh, instead, we will simply be servicing the, uh, the traffic that is already present.
But my, my concern is there's obviously, uh, safety is, I think, a concern of all of the council and, and everybody. But if you're, how many islands are you gonna have to service over the road, tractor trailers?
It's, it's hard to say as of right now. I believe we're currently proposing four tractor trailers, uh, I believe three, uh, separate fueling stations, uh, which would be, yeah, pumps, griddies, tractor trailers, uh, to fuel. So, it's not a very large number, like you'll see at a lot of the pilots or, uh, gloves around the interstate, um, but there will be, uh, there will be plenty of fuel there.
I believe at the present time, and I wish I could be there in person, but I believe Mr. Barnes has roughly maybe twenty to thirty tractor trailers either going into his property or coming out on a daily basis. I think once your operation is up and running, I, I guess that maybe that will double or even triple the number of tractor trailers trying to come out, uh, next to his property, and that stop light. And I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned with the, uh, present, uh, diagram, and in how that, that intersection and stop light is configured. And, um, there's gonna be a lot more traffic, and with tractor trailers hauling, uh, products, hoteling, I'm concerned with, uh, a major catastrophe, uh, occurring sometime in the future. I hope not, but that's my concern. And, um, I'm. And, um, I just want to vote, no, this, I just want to let everybody know in advance before we take a vote that, uh, I, I just cannot approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Other than that?
I will, if we adopt the recommendation to approve the rezoning of the road.
Second made by, uh, council, motion made by Council Blackwell, second by Council Joyner, uh, given that, uh, Council Harris has joined us remotely, we're gonna do it, we're now, uh, we're, vote, so I'll ask the court for please call roll. Vote your names, call.
Councilor number nine?
Yeah.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yeah.
TJ Walker?
Yes.
Doltrich?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Javoris Walker?
Yes.
Vote for Harris. First item number eleven on each end of this public hearing relative to the following rezoning request recommended approval of the plans and contracts. Thank you. This request, I've Thomas Lane Hopkins to rezonate plus or minus, uh, point eight five six acres side of particularly pasture road from B five, which is commercial service district to A one, which is agricultural residential district. Uh, this time, um, we'll have staff, please come and give us a review of this, I'll open it up to public comment, then, um, then I'll entertain a motion.
Who do you think council? Emily Kingston with Development Services. Again, this is a request to rezonate a site of point eight five six acres in size from B five to A one, which is an agricultural district. Uh, the property is outlined in yellow on the screen, along Coney Road. It's located adjacent to Ward one, which, but the property is within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's surrounded completely by the A one agricultural zoning district. Uh, no members of the public spoke during the public hearing at the planning board meeting regarding this request. The A one agricultural district is intended to be agricultural in nature and rule in character for an in low density residential uses. The planning board has recommended approval of this request because they found it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and that it is reasonable, given the zoning district is consistent with surrounding land uses and zoning. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Other than that? Okay, I'll just, I'll open up kind of the general public. Is anyone here who wishes to speak on this particular matter? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on a matter related to the rezoning of B two or pasture road? Right here, done all, for, uh, entertain a motion. Motion made by Councilon Joyner, third second, second by Council Blackwell, thirty for discussion. Right here, done all, uh, I'll ask the court for please call roll, vote your names, call.
Number nine?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yeah.
TJ Walker?
Yes.
Doltrich?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Javoris Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. First item number twelve, our agenda was consideration within its recommendation for the planning board being able to sell these several wealth of twenty twenty-three at the dollar, see that it's paying forty minutes. This time, I'll have a public hearing relative to the following rezoning request recommended for approval of the found compliance of contracts and planning board. Requested by O R, O R, A R, I R E, Mahal, A M V, I V O F and Service Express to rezonate plus or minus one point four four acre site at fourteen five hundred U S sixty-four alternate, alternate west highway from B one, which is a commercial district to B five C D, which is a conditional commercial site district. With condition that a salvage operation, junk yard, prohibited on subject property. This time, I'd like to ask some of our staff, please come and give us a review of this, if you have mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the subject property is located along Springfield Road, outlined in yellow on the screen. The surrounding and nearby land uses include a restaurant, fire station, gas station, and single family residential within the vicinity. The intent of the B five district is to support a wide variety of commercial uses. This request was originally a proposal for B five, however, a nearby property owner, um, spoke at the planning board public hearing regarding this request and they expressed concern about the possibility of a salvage yard or a junkyard, um, being operated on this property, which is a permitted use within the B five zoning district. At that time, the applicant agreed to add a condition to the proposal to prohibit salvage yards and, um, and junkyards, and then it turned into B five C D, conditional. The planning board recommended approval of this request because they found it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and that B five is reasonable at this location, given the surrounding zoning district and land uses within the vicinity. I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Other questions from Spencer? I had a call from, uh, some constituents in the areas, I'm just gonna read from what they sent me. Uh, this is the intersection of U S sixty-four alternate west and Springfield Road is well-traveled and it's identified as the pedestrian friendly community. This is identified in the Together Tomorrow Tier One Smart Road Comprehensive Plan. Rezoning this parcel from B one to B five conditional use, uh, with the intention of establishing outside stores, warehouse, other private uses. In the future would be an eyesore to the community and travelers who utilize this corridor each day. And I know where that is and I hope, um, in this, um, passing up this rezoning, that what, uh, they intend to do, uh, the site plans and, um, would have to be approved by your office.
That's correct.
And with the planning board also being involved with that or wants to rezonate, then it just so be in your office.
It's unlikely that the planning board would be involved, um, a planning board, the planning board would be involved if the development, um, involved a construction project that was over ten thousand square feet, um, given the, uh, the proposed use and the size of the property, the development review, specifically by the development review committee.
Okay, and the second thing, uh, that they were concerned about, um, in reviewing the melons of notice list, the initial county's, I guess, only three of the eleven notification were sent out to the residential property owners. Two of those notification were in Wally Cove subdivision, which consists of fifty residential property owners, of which two lots of vacant, uh, notification were sent out to the required within two hundred feet of the proposed site. While yet the majority of the homeowners who are going to be impacted may not have been aware of the proposed rezoning and the proposed development. The rezoning sign posted on the site does not provide specific information pertaining to the rezoning, only that the public hearing is being held and the majority of the notification was sent to commercial properties, uh, owners. And I know those signs don't have too much information other than a public hearing. And I think the signs, um, they mentioned that they were too small, they may have missed it. But the main concern is whatever development, I think for a U-Haul business, that, uh, it is done, um, correctly, uh, and that is done with, um, um. The concern that they had, you know, parts of junkyard, you did address that. I just want to make sure that it's not gonna be an eyesore on a corner because it's well-traveled and hopefully from the site plans and the development, to make sure that will happen correctly.
Our office will ensure that all the regulations within the land development code are completed, um, and other works and other departments will also be reviewing the site plan as part of the development review committee.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, I just, I can have a, a comment, Mr. Manager, you might, you might have some insight on this. Um, I know we're in the process of, of a comprehensive development plan review, where, you know, of the heart, is that correct? And so, um, one of the things, the conversations that we've had in times past, um, with developers when they're coming to communities and areas terms about the way things looked or, you know, how they operated, what's on voluntary design standards. You know, there were some communities that, uh, just didn't want to have, um, you know, uh, natural buildings built up where you see the metal and, and there's no brick facing or something that ties into a neighborhood. And we know that, um, that they wrote Springfield, um, community is a, um, established, single family home, um, community that has lots of potential to grow. And, and so, is there some type of, um, opportunity to talk with the developer when they're bringing in a business that seems to be necessary and important, uh, to the community? That they're also neighborhood sensitive, even how we design the development, as I know it's a money issue, but it's also a neighborhood, you know, that, 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 that's more connected. So, perhaps there could be some reassurance given to, uh, the folks who live in those communities that you would have a different standard for a development that goes on Springfield Road than you would have a Sunset Avenue.
The land development code does outline appearance standards for along certain arterials within the city. I do not believe that Springfield Road is one of those arterials, so I don't believe that any appearance standards would apply in this case. Um, the city could certainly encourage appearance standards or certain materials to be included with the development, um, but because it's not part of the land development code administratively, we would not be able to require those types of materials.
So, that's what I'm understanding and I'm hoping that as we move forward and do plan or design, that we will include corridors like this corridor with design standards. So, that it's not acceptable if you're in a certain place or certain location or certain people, you have great looking buildings and if you're not in that location, the buildings are not so great. So, if we understand that hands are tied, I'm just asking that you use all that great personality to try to convince them that if we go out in the land with them, that we're something to thank you for, we're thanking a future, thank you with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
May I have one?
Just heard Council Black?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Council Blackwell, since this has not been voted on, um, what Council Blackwell just stated, uh, far as, um, the building and the, um, the site plan, all of that would have been discussed, uh, if, I think, one person came out, that's correct, a citizen.
That's correct.
And so, if the community had come out and asked for those specific things, uh, those concerns or requests could have been asked of the developer at that meeting?
It's possible that appearance standards can be included as a condition of rezoning. At the public hearing for the planning board, um, architectural, the architectural discussion was not brought up from the public or particular, um, design elements or, um, or architectural materials, um, but it is possible for those types of things to be included as a condition of other zones.
And will the property owner be willing to, to have a meeting with those who are concerned? But before this is voted upon, I would ask my companies to.
I have a question.
I was kind of understanding, and I, I remember, I get confused sometimes, and always get the most complaint board. I recall approving anything that's facing a street. Um, it had, it had to have, um, some, certain substrate, and I didn't know that it was, and I thought it applied throughout the city, I could be wrong, but I do recall, um, doing that when I was in the planning board. It's prepared, I don't know, um, because of, for the very reasons you called on, Council Blackwell, and, um, we proved some substrates, but that might be what you referred to, Ms. Benson, um, regarding the, um, particular areas. I, so I, I might be confused, considering, but I think it's worthy of, okay, fine, before we make a proceed.
Can I ask this question to the council? If we could delay it to our next council meeting and forgive the community, uh, in Wally Cove and those who may have had questions that was not present, um, to meet with the developer?
Is that your motion, council?
Yes.
All right, so motion's made, third second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Javoris Walker, that we, um, that we, just, I think we'll, we'll postpone this until the next meeting.
Yes.
Got a motion, second, it's a deeper discussion. Right here, done, I'll ask for a whole call, please vote.
Councilor number nine?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
TJ Walker?
Yes.
Doltrich?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Javoris Walker?
Yes.
The matters, we'll postpone to the next meeting, however, be excessive to the fact that people may have shown up here that want to speak to this matter. I will entertain anybody who's here from the general public, which is to speak to this particular matter, so the right people have here.
Yes, please.
I'm Omar, we are on, on the land, I have, um, um, banking work. I'm looking right now, I have copies of E and J builders that I've been working with, I'm ready to hand phone them. And license contractors, I got pictures on my phone, if you'd like to see it. And, um, to show you all the, the structure and design and the metal roof and, and the C F A. It's your need, and it is reasonable for you all, and, um.
Would you like to see that?
No, I would just ask if, uh, our planning director could get with you and for those who may have questions, and then you can show it to us there.
You, you've heard the questions that have been raised, anything you can address with the planning board, they would be very helpful toward, uh, this consideration, this particular matter. I believe that's what is the will of council, based on this discussion. And so, um, if you can do that, we'll receive all the information that we gave, and we'll be happy to bring the item to vote, uh, on the next meeting.
I, I want to make sure that, uh, will you, um, be able to have a meeting with those in that area that have questions?
Those who have questions are certainly able to, to reach out. Um, with those questions, are, are you wanting us to, to reach out to?
The community would the developer to hear what the actual, um, site development is gonna be?
Hosts and neighborhood meetings?
Yes. It could be.
Ask the, we repost the meeting?
Yes.
To give interested parties an opportunity to speak prior to the next one.
The law.
Yes.
The law, good, good.
Yes, sir, I have, I have no choice.
Is there anybody else here from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? I certainly will entertain you as well. Right here, done, uh, we'll move on to item fourteen. There's a recommendation we posted this item today, February twelve, please, council, uh, retain the motion, that fact, that, uh, by Council Dolch, second by Council Joyner, it's gonna be for discussion. Right here, done, I'll ask, uh, seat court, please call roll, vote your names, call.
Councilor number nine? Blackwell?
Yes.
Yeah.
TJ Walker?
Yes.
Doltrich?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Javoris Walker?
Yes.
And again, um, just be excessive, folks, if they have shown up to talk with this particular matter, if you're here from the public who wishes to speak on this particular matter, certainly here you tonight. Is there anyone here from the public? Okay. Number seven, fourteen, again, which is a request or recommendation, we posted this item today, February twelve, uh, the city council meeting, is there, at least is the council, is there a motion that that, I would say? Motion made by Council Joyner, second by Council Doltrich, is there a deeper discussion? Right here, done, I'll ask the capital court, please call roll, vote your names, call.
Councilor number nine?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
TJ Walker?
Yes.
Doltrich?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Javoris Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
This time I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and close session. Motion by councilman Joyner, second by councilman. Tomorrow's morning. Reasonable push now. All right, please hold on, but we next call.
Yes.
All right. All right, we're down for a session.